And we'll begin with a roll call, starting with Councilor Hoben.
Councilor Hoben.
Catrice McKay.
George Handley.
Rachel Whipple.
Gary Garrett.
Becky Bogdan.
And Craig Christensen.
Thank you. We welcome also Mayor Kafusi to the dais. Our opening prayer this evening will be offered by Brooke Barnes, who is the Secretary for the District Three Neighborhood. And that she will be followed by Councilor Bogdan, who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Brooke.
Our dear Heavenly Father, we're so grateful that we could meet here today. We're grateful for the opportunity that we have to serve in our community and for this wonderful place that we live. Please bless us that we can make good decisions and have thy Spirit. And we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, will you all rise?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank Craig for his catering, so he didn't turn me off.
Thank you, Becky, and thank you, Brooke. Our first agenda item is a special presentation that will be delivered to us by Mayor Kafusi and Bill Pepperoni, recognizing Provo City's Employee of the Month.
Chair Garrett and Vice Chair Whipple and members of the Municipal Council, thank you for the opportunity to recognize an exceptional employee whose dedication, professionalism, and service have made a meaningful and lasting impact on our community. While One Provo is built on the strength of collaboration and teamwork, it's also important to acknowledge the remarkable individuals who consistently go above and beyond in their rosy state. So this evening, I am pleased to invite our Development Services Director, Bill Pepperoni, to present the August 2025 Employee of the Month Award to an outstanding member of our Development Services team.
Thank you, Mayor. This award is for Sandy Wellmuth in the Development Services Department.
Oh, we should applaud, because you just said her name.
Sandy has been with the city for approximately three years. During that time, she has been the Economic Development Policy Analyst, and she has been the Planning Division's Senior Administrative Assistant. In her current position, Sandy organizes the agendas, meetings, and minutes for five boards and commissions, including the Planning Commission, the Board of Adjustment, and the Landmarks Commission. This means Sandy attends evening meetings that regularly add two to three hours to her workday. In both positions, Sandy has demonstrated the ability to identify weaknesses and improve systems for greater customer service or increase productivity. For the past two years, Sandy has done an outstanding job on the Executive Committee overseeing the Provo Advantage Charity Golf Summit. This event, with all its moving parts, demands vision, precision, and follow-through. Sandy has brought all three in abundance. She not only managed logistics with impressive thoroughness, but also ensured every aspect was accounted for by strategically delegating responsibilities and maintaining focus on the bigger picture. This year's tournament was a huge success, largely due to Sandy's work. Additionally, Sandy was simultaneously filled roles in Economic Development and the Planning Division while new staff were being hired. Beyond her professional achievements, Sandy contributes something equally valuable to our workplace culture: kindness, camaraderie, and genuine friendship. She takes the time to recognize and appreciate those around her, helping to foster a warm, inclusive, and supportive environment. Her positivity and encouragement help others feel valued. Sandy's combination of professional excellence and personal integrity make her an incredible asset to our team. We're deeply grateful for her hard work, her leadership, and the uplifting presence she brings to our office every day.
Thank you, Sandy. Congratulations again, Sandy, and thank you for your great work. We'll now begin the public comment period of our meeting. As indicated on the screen, a required public hearing will be held for certain agenda items prior to council action. After each such item has been presented, time to comment will be provided. For items that do not require a public hearing, public comment will still be taken following the presentation of the item, but will be limited to 10 minutes. At this time, up to 15 minutes have been set aside for open public comment, which is intended to allow comment on matters that do not appear on the agenda, but are also limited to topics regarding municipal business or within municipal council purview. During any public comment period, each speaker will generally be limited to two minutes. Due to noticing requirements, no formal action will be taken in the meeting on matters that do not appear on the agenda. Those with comments are invited to approach the podium. If any are watching by Zoom and would like to make a comment, you can just use the raise hand feature on your phone. Please begin your comments by stating your name and city of residence. If there is anyone who'd like to make public comment, you can approach the podium at this time. If there's no public comment, then we'll close public comment and move forward with council business. The next item is an implied motion on a resolution consenting to board and commission appointments. This will be presented also by Mayor Kafusi.
Before I start, I just want to thank Heidi. She has done such a great job, Heidi Walstad, with keeping us on top of our boards and commissions. It's a huge process, and she is keeping me busy, because she's so on top of it. So I am here recommending the following appointments and reappointments to Provo City's boards and commissions, as indicated below, and submit for the council's advice and consent. Brooke Barnes. Brooke has been an active member of her neighborhood board, including serving as chair. She brings valuable insight into city programs and community issues. I am recommending that Brooke be appointed to the expired seat on the Parks and Recreation Board for a three-year term ending June 30, 2028. Doug Gardner. I am recommending that Doug be reappointed to a two-year term on the Parks and Recreation Board ending June 30. Bonnie Morrow. I am recommending Bonnie Morrow be appointed to a three-year term on the Parks and Recreation Board ending June 30, 2028. Brittany Hyde. I am recommending that Brittany be reappointed to a two-year term on the Parks and Recreation Board ending June 30, 2027. And Dan Mitchell. I am recommending that Dan be reappointed to a three-year term on the Parks and Recreation Board ending June 30, 2028.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Any questions for Mayor Kafusi on these appointments? We'll now open a public comment period on this item. If there are any here who wish to speak about any of these appointments, you can approach the podium. Seeing none, we'll close public comment and bring the item to council for discussion. Any comments, councilors, or discussion, or questions? Councilor Bogdan.
I would just like to say that we appreciate all the volunteer hours that go into every single one of these boards and commissions. We could not staff our city and have the public input that these boards and commissions provide for people if people like you did not serve. So I, for one, am very appreciative of your willingness to come and be a part of one of these boards and commissions and to even apply for them. So thank you.
And in fact, we see that activity in person, because most council members serve as liaisons to the council on these commissions. I do the Parks and Rec and Provo Foundation, and I see the volunteers in the community who put in great hours. Thank you, Councilor Bogdan. I'll call for a vote then on this implied motion. Counselor McKay.
Yes.
Counselor Christensen.
Yes.
Counselor Handley.
Yes.
Counselor Bogdan.
Yes.
Counselor Hoben.
Yes.
Counselor Whipple.
Yes.
And Counselor Garrett, yes. This motion passes by a vote of seven zero. Thank you, and thank you again, Mayor Kafusi. Next, we have a resolution rescinding Resolution 2025-32 and approving the execution of an inter-local cooperation agreement to authorize Provo City's participation in the Utah Valley Home Consortium under HUD's home program for fiscal years 26 through 28. This will be presented by Community Grant Administrator Melissa McNally. Welcome, Melissa.
Thank you. So we just need to rescind the previous resolution that you heard in June. HUD came back to us and said, you need to include some language. So that's why the rescission, and then we're asking for you to approve the resolution again to participate in the Utah Valley Home Consortium. Do you have any questions for me on the item?
Any questions for Melissa? Great, thank you, Melissa. This item is also open for public comment. If there are any here who wish to speak to this item, you can approach the podium at this time. If not, we'll close public comment and bring the item back to council for discussion or clarification. Councilors, any comments?
Yes.
Counselor Christensen.
Just, again, I wanted to express appreciation. This is such a worthy cause, and this is so needed. And I'm grateful that Provo plays an active role in this, and you've done such a wonderful job leading it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Others? All right, we'll call for a vote then. Counselor Christensen.
Yes.
Counselor Handley.
Yes.
Counselor Bogdan.
Yes.
Counselor Hoben.
Yes.
Counselor Whipple.
Yes.
Counselor Garrett, yes, and Counselor McKay.
Yes.
Thank you. This item passes by a vote of seven zero. Thank you, Melissa. Next, we have an implied motion on a resolution accepting an annexation petition for further consideration for approximately 16.67 acres of property, generally located at 4505 North Canyon Road. This item will be presented by one of our city planners, Jessica Donakie. Welcome, Jessica. Try the other one.
Yeah, there we go. Thank you. Yeah, so this is a resolution to accept the petition for annexation. Kevin, if you could pull up the GIS map. Thank you. It's just the south portion of Foothill Drive. It's a small island of county land within Provo City. So this resolution is to accept the petition, and then it will be brought back to you to pass as an ordinance. From there, it's sent to the state to be certified and recorded. Do you have any questions?
So the land is everything that we see outlined in the shaded gray there, north and south of Foothill Drive?
Just the south portion.
Oh, just the south portion.
Correct.
Counselor Bogdan.
So Jessica, do we have the infrastructure to support this? Do we have sewer capacity? Do we have water capacity? Do we have what needs for the development of this property?
It will get further review after the petition has been accepted for review. But an initial review, yes, we believe that there is capacity for development here.
The initial review does say, yes, there is capacity?
Yes.
Okay, because that's what my vote would depend on. If there's not capacity, I would just say no. So that, you know, because it's an investment in whoever's time is doing this. If there's not. Okay, thanks.
So what would be the process then, Jessica, after this petition is presented?
Yes, so after this resolution, if it is accepted, there's a mandatory waiting period for people to protest. From there, it comes back to you as an ordinance that we certified with the state. Once that annexation has been certified, it comes into the city, and it's zoned as open space, parks, and recreation. So for development to happen, then a rezone is presented to you, and then a project plan would go to Planning Commission.
So all told, it sounds like, what, three to six months?
Yes.
Okay. Other questions for Jessica? Thank you, Jessica.
Thank you.
This item is available for public comment. If there are any here who would like to make a comment, you can approach the podium at this time. Welcome, Sharon. State your name.
Sharon Memmott, District One Board. And I say that because this hasn't come to our neighborhood meeting, so we hadn't heard about this. And there was actually some confusion about this annexation versus the north annexation.
Right.
I think we have that cleared out on our side. But just some questions. Where in the resolution does it specify that if it's annexed, if it passes, that it automatically comes into the OSPR zone? I'd love to see that added to the resolution placement. When it's annexed, is the city required to get sewer or other utilities within a certain amount of timeframe? Sidewalks have just been put in on that portion. Do they now have to meet a different code? Because they don't have the park strip in place, the ones that were just put in. Does a 14-day response, no response, automatic acceptance, go straight through to the state, or does it even pass that step? I think you've met it, because we're doing this tonight. But I was just curious when I read that. For future annexations, kind of thing. You've answered the question about the process time that it takes. We wondered, of course, as neighbors, if there's any plan in the works for this. We know there's other steps they have to go through, and that will be noticed. But we were curious, does he plan to build? I know what the general plan says for the area for building. We were just kind of curious if the applicant has that. And as I heard you ask about the map, the map that was published actually outlines some red that is north of the road. So now I'm curious what exactly we're annexing completely. So that was my question.
Thank you, Sharon. Other public comments? Seeing none, we'll close public comment and bring the item back to the council for discussion. Councilors, any comments or questions?
Chair Garrett, if you'd like me to, I could address some of the questions.
That would be great, Brian. Could you please?
So Jessica referred to this, but the annexation process is a little bit interesting. The state has put in this preliminary step, which really exists, in my view. It's almost better to think about it being in there as an opportunity to reject it rather than an opportunity to accept it. And what I mean by that is, when somebody submits a petition, by state code, the council has only 14 days to either accept or reject the petition for further consideration, which obviously is not enough time to do any study whatsoever. This step essentially exists so that if somebody submits an annexation petition for something that's not even in our annexation policy, and we look at it and go, under no circumstances would we even consider that, then the council has the opportunity to reject it and just put a stop to it in those 14 days. And the reason why I phrase it as it's really in the code as an opportunity to reject is because if the council doesn't act within 14 days, it's automatically accepted for further consideration. But that acceptance means nothing. That acceptance only means that the process starts, right? So that's what the 14-day deadline is for. It's really a 14-day deadline to say no, no matter what, rather than it is a 14-day deadline to say something affirmative, in my view. So once either the 14 days have passed or the council affirmatively votes to accept it for further consideration, then the entire process starts of the city reviewing it, all of the infrastructure questions, all of the questions that have been alluded to today. One of which, which I think also answers one of the questions that Sharon asked, is that part of the normal... So first of all, I'll answer the question two ways about our obligations. No, there is nothing in code that clearly dictates that accepting the annexation automatically imposes obligations on the city. There is kind of an implied obligation in the sense that, why are we accepting it if we don't want it hooked up to the rest of the city? But the normal process is that Development Services and everybody else during the process, they will sit down with the landowner and work out what's called an annexation agreement that is very much like a development agreement. It's the annexation version of a development agreement that goes with a rezone, where we actually work out and clarify with the petitioners what we are going to do and what we're not going to do, and execute that agreement so that the obligations are clearer than they would be if it's just kind of left up in the air. And then as far as the automatic acceptance in the OSPR, Jessica might have to help me out on this. I was about to say, it doesn't need to be in the resolution, one, because we're not at that stage. It would be in the future ordinance when we actually annex. But secondly, I was about to say that it's already in the code, but it might just be in the general plan. There's a... I know that there is a policy document that says it is the policy of the city. Okay, it's the general plan. There is a policy document that says it's the policy of the city for annexations to come in as OSPR, but it's in the general plan. So, and that is something, again, I should say, because the general plan is advisory, just to be clear here and set expectations, there have been instances in the past where as part of the annexation agreement process, we have actually agreed to let it come in under some other way in some other zone classification. But we do that as part of the negotiation of the annexation agreement, so that there's agreement on what that would be.
I could just add a clarification. Yeah, the reason we created that policy was essentially to discourage annexations that are motivated by development. That doesn't mean we would oppose any proposed annexation for development. It's just that we didn't like the idea that any surrounding properties could be sending signals to developers to come and put pressure on the city to convert agricultural lands into developments.
Right. It essentially creates...
It's like a default setting.
Yeah, it creates a two-step process where you annex them, then they apply for a rezone, and you work out the details in a development agreement regarding the rezone. What I was alluding to before is there is a possibility, in certain cases, to condense that into a one-step process, where if you already know enough about the plan to know what you want the agreement to be, you could, in the annexation agreement, agree to both the development and infrastructure requirements and what the new zone would be, if you wanted to. So there's two different ways of doing it. And I think that answered all of your questions, Sharon, but I'm happy to talk to you afterwards if it didn't.
Thank you, Brian. Those are very helpful clarifications. Counselor McKay.
There was one more clarification that I was also wondering about, and that's the outline. I mean, even in Jessica's picture, it shows east and west of the... or south and north of Foothill Drive. And in our packet, it also showed south and north of Foothill Drive. So is that correct or not correct? And I remember, like, weeks ago, we had the same issue where the picture was incorrect, and we had to redo it all. So do we need to redo this all?
Jessica, could you respond to this?
Yes, that was me misremembering. That is the correct image that was uploaded with the placemat. That was my error in speaking, so I apologize for that.
So it's all the property?
So it's all coming in?
Anything in the red line, within the red area, yes.
Red, okay, gotcha.
So everything's south and a little bit north of Foothill. Okay, thank you. Counselor Bogdan.
I guess I have, like, two questions. So it looks like there's just one parcel on the north end that's not wanting to come to the city. That's correct. And the other part is owned by multiple owners? And why are they wanting to come into the city at this point in time? Is the landowner here?
The property owners are not here. We have a applicant here.
George Bills with Gardiner and Associates. Just to clarify, on the south side of Foothill, there are probably six to eight different parcels that are all owned by the same owner. So when that property was purchased from... I'm making sure the name of the lady that has all the sheep, anyway. We had it just divided up into parcels, and we're going to combine them all into one parcel.
Okay.
Okay, and is it going to have any issues with that one lone property coming in by itself at some point, or?
No, this is an existing island, so we're just reducing the size of it. If the future owner wants to come in at any point, they can initiate their own annexation to do so. They just, I guess, didn't want to come in with this one. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? I, for one, feel the property does have a great potential and belongs in the Provo City boundaries. I would support the petition. Any other comments or questions? Counselor McKay.
Another question that Sharon asked. Do you have any idea of the future plans of the land, what they want to do with it?
At present, it's just agricultural. So there are just a lot of sheep that are there. We have several families who are living there that he's going to let stay there as long as they can. And at that point, there'll probably be some cleanup. There has been some talk of possibly putting two homes on it and leaving the bulk of it in agricultural. So, but that's just guesswork at this point.
Thank you.
All right. If there are no other comments or questions, I'll call for a vote. Counselor Handley?
Yes.
Counselor Bogdan?
Yes.
Counselor Hoben?
Yes.
Counselor Whipple?
Yes.
Counselor Garrett, yes. Counselor McKay?
Yes.
Counselor Christensen?
Yes.
So this resolution passes by a vote of seven zero. Thank you, Jessica. Our final agenda item is a resolution adopting the 2026 Council Regular Meeting Schedule, presented by the council's executive director, Justin Harrison.
Good evening, council. We spoke about this at length, two weeks ago at work meeting, but each year is required by state code. The council or governing body of a city is required to adopt formally their meeting schedule for the upcoming year. So that is the purpose of this resolution. The dates are laid out with most months having two meetings with the option of more. There's always an option for more meetings, so... So just let us know when you want to schedule them. We'll have one every week if you want. Any questions?
And I see the two budget priority meetings also, Justin. Those are separate from the regular council meetings.
Correct, yes. So January, even my glasses, I can't read, January 6th, it looks like, and February 3rd are planned. Oh, heaven, to save the day. I'm getting old. Are two planned budget priority work meetings at the beginning of the year.
Questions for Justin?
Go first, Becky.
Go ahead, Councillor Bogdan.
I was just going to say with this, I appreciate all the hard work. Our meetings lately have been very, very short. And so I appreciate that we only have one in July because we do need a break and we do have vacations and things going. I would like to see another one if we could scroll down to November. Nix the November 17th one. As we start to get towards the end of the year, I'm hearing that a lot of staff takes time off and we get things really crammed to the first of the year or right before November because those holidays are just kind of where it's not a whole lot of stuff going on. So I'd like to propose that we nix the November 17th meeting and just have one in November and one in July. Yeah.
I would second that.
Justin, would there be an option to prove the calendar and then as the workflow presents itself over the course of the year, cancel? I mean, or once it's published, does that meeting need to be held?
So always an option to cancel or to add. Always a proponent of adding a meeting. I know how much you love them. But yes, we can always post a notice of cancellation.
Okay. Councillor Bogdan?
So my comment with that is we voted to do that last year and we ran into that July issue. And once we publish this, this is what staff uses to put things on there. And so I mentioned to Justin before in July, hey, maybe we should just kind of nix that because we're having issues there. And we couldn't because we had important stuff all through July. If we didn't have that on the calendar, it sends a message to staff and we have it all in one area. So they could have that. And those meetings weren't very long. They could have easily have been combined, but they weren't. So I think just, just to give us and staff a little bit of a break, I'm not recommending that we do that. I just recommend we just nix it. And then if there's something that's really, really big that has to come up, we can always put it back on. But we are sending a signal to everybody if we leave it on and we don't cancel them. Let's just be honest, we don't.
So to your earlier comment, Justin, a meeting that does not appear on the calendar could be added if the workload is there.
Yeah, and that's why we just always have a special meeting as needed for a published calendar.
Any comments or questions on the motion that has been made by Councillor Bogdan and sent to by Councillor McKay?
I'm not in support of that. Every once in a while, I think it's fine for us to have, you know, three weeks in a row without council meetings. But I don't like doing that very often. I think it interrupts the normal flow of our work and having those set dates and accountability for all of us to keep things moving. So I would rather go ahead and keep the schedule as it is proposed here.
Any other comments? All right, I'll call for a vote on the motion then that the calendar be accepted with the one requested change that for now, the November 17th meeting be removed from the schedule. Councillor Bogdan?
Yes.
Councillor Hoben?
Yes.
Councillor Whipple?
No.
Councillor Garrett, no. Councillor McKay?
Yes.
Councillor Christensen?
Yes.
And Councillor Handley?
Yes, but my vote in no way indicates any commitment to be at any of these meetings.
We'll miss you, Councillor Handley. So that motion and the 2026 council regular meeting schedule passes as presented by Justin by a vote of five to two.
With the amendment.
I'm sorry?
Oh, as amended.
As amended, thank you. Okay, thank you, Justin. If there is no objection, we will now adjourn the municipal council meeting by unanimous consent. Thank you.